All right, we have one minute until start time. The school board of the Duval County School District is now convened in an emergency board meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present. The Duval County School Board is here to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement and address other business items that require a vote of the board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the board to make managerial or operational decisions. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comment portion of the board meeting, please note that pursuant to board policy, we accepted speaker cards for this meeting until the published start time for the meeting. As always, we thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County Public School District. At this time, I'm going to ask that the Duval County School Board approve the May 2, 2023 agenda as submitted on May 2, 2023. I ask for a motion.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Hershey and a second by Board Member Joyce. Are there any further comments? Seeing none, I call for your vote. At this time, that item passes 6-1. We are now on to the public comment portion, but prior to the public comment portion, I want to make sure that I call on the Office of General Counsel, Mr. Poole, to explain the intent and purpose of a emergency meeting and the qualifications around having an emergency meeting by our school board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair to the board, emergency meetings are appropriate where they involve the health, safety, and welfare of the children, and where it's an emergency situation that potentially impacts the health, safety, and welfare of the children. And I don't know if you wish for me to address this particular situation or just in general the standards. I'd be happy to do both if you wish.
If you want to go ahead and address them on a general note for the public.
Yes, ma'am. And again, through the chair, in this situation, of course, the operations of the school district are, needless to say, impact the welfare of our children. And the leadership of the school district directly impacts the operations of the school district, which in turn affect the welfare of the children of Duval County. It is my understanding that the superintendent had expressed to some board members an interest in retiring, and the anticipation was that that retirement date had been moved up. And there is a desire, there's a need to ensure that there is a continued seamless, if you will, operation of the school district. And so I need that in the event the superintendent were to leave the school district, obviously, we would need to have someone in place to handle that. And so that was the basis for setting this.
All right, thank you. We are now on to the public comment portion of our agenda. The school board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond, but to use the input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, we ask that the audience refrain from audible comments or applause. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. The board will allocate time for public comment based on the number of speakers who have filled out speaker cards prior to the designated time. If one to 20 speakers have signed up to speak, each will be allotted three minutes. If 21 to 40 speakers have signed up, each will be allotted two minutes. And if 41 or more speakers have signed up to speak, each will be allotted one minute. Today, we have 15 speakers, so each of them will be given three minutes to speak. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the board. We ask that you hand them over to Mr. Poole, who is from the Office of General Counsel. Board policy provides for an orderly and efficient meeting without disruption by words or actions. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals and to follow expectations for civil discourse. We have placed hand sanitizer and disinfectant wipes at the podium, and we ask that each speaker wipe down the podium before you address the board. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted up until the start time for the meeting. At this time, I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Pearson to facilitate the speaker cards.
Thank you. I'll call three names if the first name can line up at the podium, the second name behind the first person, and the third name behind the second person. The first name up is Sharman Smith. Second name is Becky Nathanson. The third name is Katie Hathaway.
Thank you. My name is Sharman Smith. I'm a Fletcher parent and a former bill collector, mortgage underwriter, and fraud investigator here in Jacksonville, Florida. I had the privilege of negotiating multimillion-dollar repurchase demands for Deutsche Bank during the 2008 mortgage collapse, and I know exactly why your interest is in keeping the scope of this investigation small. And I appreciate the liability that our community is under, and I'm well aware that we cannot afford the class action lawsuit that is building up against us. But I am here to continue my math equation because I want to make sure that you understand how much is truly at stake here. One pedophile statistically creates over 250 victims before he is convicted. It is my understanding because of this investigation, there are now four teachers in this school district that are under active investigation. And during the last meeting, after I asked some good fact-finding questions, it's my understanding the head of the ethics department resigned and submitted 50 cases to the state in order to be investigated. And I understand that to be every single investigation that has taken place in this district since 2020, when the word grooming became mainstream. And as a survivor of childhood sexual abuse, I see grooming very differently, and I am here to help you understand it. Because within grooming, you have the groomer and the groomed. And right now, you have people all over the country waking up realizing that they have been groomed, and they have been duped into doing the dirty work of people they don't like. Groomers are very good at making legal excuses for illegal activities, and that is why we have statutes of limitations. In the mortgage industry, I quickly identified that the Sunset Clause was the source of our biggest expense, so I negotiated our deals very specifically. But with survivors of childhood sexual abuse, it doesn't matter if the statute of limitations says you only get four years to press charges. Our Sunset Clause is for our life as well. And what we have with this teacher situation is very complicated because we have two different police departments in our community. We have Jacksonville Sheriff's Office, and we have a school sheriff's office. And we have a sheriff who is desperate to get rid of our school sheriff's office, and this investigation is a clear example of why. Because of the way this investigation happened, our Sunset Clause is not two years. It goes back to 2006, and we have a very broad scope for how many victims could come forward and should come forward within this community. And we need to stop the bleeding and assure our insurance carrier that we did everything we could to protect our children so that they will pay whatever claim we have. Insurance companies are leaving the state of Florida left and right, and school districts are going to find themselves in a very difficult situation nationwide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in line is Melissa Bernhardt.
Good afternoon. My name is Becky Nathanson with Moms for Liberty Duval. It was Martin Luther who said, "Peace when possible, but truth at all costs." And it's time for the truth and consequences. Parents and taxpayers are acutely aware that this board and the OGC have very little regard for our intelligence, yet have profound respect for your own. For a group that should be trying to regain our trust is extremely off-putting. Last week, we watched as the public were intentionally misled regarding the selection of a defense attorney for the district, and it was said that this firm has no ties to the district when, in fact, you knew that was false. Years ago, a grand jury was convened. They provided recommendations that would have improved the safety of students in this school district. Their recommendations were summarily ignored by you all, the board, and the school district. The district has created a moral hazard. That is the risk of incentivizing bad behavior by taking away the consequences. That's exactly what put numerous young girls in the position of being victimized by a predatory teacher. Educational theorists prattle a lot about creating safe spaces but support weakened discipline practices for students and staff, which makes school less safe. And yet, we're told not to believe our lying eyes. The board is facing dropping enrollment in a crisis of public distrust. To be very clear, we do not want any scapegoating of one individual. We want every person responsible held to account. This is the first necessary step in restoring trust. It is not those who call out broken laws in a culture of sweeping abhorrent behavior under the rug who are guilty of destroying the district's reputation. It is those who have departed from the truth and have shown that they are accountable to no one who have done the destructive work.
Thank you. Next up is Michelle Tipton.
Good afternoon. My name's Katie Hathaway, and I am a parent of two in our public schools here in Duval County. Here we are again, another emergency meeting. Right in the middle of testing, I have to point out, this is a distraction and is not acting in the best interests of students and teachers in this district. It saddens me to watch what I perceive is a calculated, coordinated attack to scapegoat one person, our superintendent. I am extremely concerned watching my city councilman continue to insert himself into this conversation. And the talking points all align with a fringe extremist group that is aligned with the governor, who has put hits out on our school board members who aren't lockstep with his agenda. A governor and his joyful warriors who have launched an attack on public education in Florida. Too many have remained silent, including people here today, and we have watched an authoritarian regime ram hateful, dangerous, and extreme laws onto our school districts. As Dr. King said, "Our lives begin to end the day we remain silent about things that matter." What is happening here today is not right. I want to thank our superintendent, who has been an exemplary leader for Team Duval and has served in our district during the most unprecedented times and under some of the craziest unforeseen circumstances. I am gravely concerned what leadership will look like in Duval County public schools moving forward. We cannot remain silent as we are witnessing a fascist agenda play out across Florida. This is a dark day in Duval.
Thank you. Next up is Pastor Bernadette Williams.
Hello, board. Melissa Bernhardt with Citizens Defending Freedom. The Douglas Anderson event is an absolute shame. It should have never happened, but it did. And now we have to deal with the aftermath of that. The victims are the real thing that we need to address here. They are afraid to come forward. Some of them are being shunned for coming forward. Parents don't know if they should send their kids to school, so I'm going to go into a little bit why I think this might be happening. I believe all this stems from the Safe Space stickers. When teachers and staff first put the Safe Space stickers on their badges through the LGBTQ support guide programming, they were signaling students, certain students, to talk to teachers about sex. The new support guide covers all students, however the damage is already done, as we can see in the Douglas Anderson event. Teachers should not be allowed to discuss sexual content with students, period. I see a clear connection of grooming students here. Maybe the new sticker needs to say "learn," and students will start asking the teachers, "How can I learn?" We need to address learning. We are continuously talking about sex. We're continuously talking about sex ed. This is not helping our students. This is not helping our statistics. If anything, what would help our statistics, whether they are transgender student or a straight student or not sure what they are, if we were focusing on their academics, if we were focusing on their actual grades, with a $2.7 billion budget, students that are falling through the cracks or failing, they're the ones that we need an educational plan for. If we continue to talk to our children nonstop about sex, yes, AIDS will go up, pregnancy will go up. STDs are usually for life, or STIs, if you'd rather name it that way. We've got to get back to our reading grade level. If 47% of Duval students in fourth grade are below reading grade average, we don't need to worry about sex ed. We need to learn about literacy. So I am asking this board to not only deal with the debacle that we're dealing with, but this goes much deeper. This goes into the whole county. There is not a student in Duval right now that is not affected by the sex conversation, all the way down to young children in their home. And I ask that we put our focus back on the victims. What can we do for them? What education plans do they have in place now? I have not heard anybody speak publicly about the horrors that they have to go through now. We need to really take a good look at the children that are actually suffering through this entire process. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next in line is LaShonda LJ Holloway.
Good afternoon. My name is Bernadette Williams. I pastor when my husband at Household of Faith Church was located on the north side. I felt very compelled to come. When I came last week, I can admit it was my first time being here in this board room, but I do look to get more involved. I've always been involved. I have three children. I have 11 grandchildren and three great-grandsons that I'm very involved with going to the schools to talk to the teachers and PTA and stuff like. But I never came here. But I just see it's a great need right now. With so much that's going on, we've had a summer camp for 16 years. We did not have it last year. Our goal is always to help and for them not to lose academics during the summer. And then not only that, we teach them other things. So I heard them say that superintendent was thinking about retiring, but I wish he would change that. She's a great superintendent. She's done some great work in this county, and I feel like she's still much needed. I feel like the times I've gone and sat with her and heard her, I remember my own childhood, being six children and six more children being added to our home, where it was 12 children. And I needed someone outside of my home to encourage me, and I had educators like her that would encourage me when I came out of my home and maybe having to wear the same clothes and maybe not having enough food. We need people that really care, that have a passion on every level, and I feel that she does that. So I pray that she would continue to do that. It's my goal. I want to help children. We're still coming off of this pandemic. Children have been damaged. Many children lost their parents. Nobody talks about those children and the emotional and mental state that they may be in. We need to come together, and we may need to make the main thing. Whatever that issue is, deal with that issue. It's not the time to go out to something different. The children need to be taught. The children need help. I volunteered. I'm a licensed clinical pastoral counselor. I volunteered when it was lead. I would go over there and do free counseling with the young people, trying to help and do whatever I can. But I will be to more board meetings, freed up with some things, want to know what's going on, want to be able to help in any capacity I can. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are you Michelle Tipton?
I am.
Okay, so we have Michelle Tipton, followed by LJ Holloway, followed by Michael J. Hawke.
I'm Michelle Tipton. I come here today to ask you, who is protecting our students? Memory seems to be short. Late August 22, a statewide grand jury called it absolutely criminal, the manipulation and underreporting of criminal activity in our schools. A display of shocking disregard for student safety. That's directly quoting the Florida grand jury. They expressed concern at that time of the superintendent's lack of awareness over allegations. The grand jury said our student, our school police was ill-equipped to make law enforcement decisions, and reporting should go to the JSO. The grand jury found 150 cases of battery, 157 cases elude lascivious acts, two dozen pornography. My question is, what happened? Where was the follow-up on this policy? Why are we seeing safety of our students in jeopardy again? Grand jury stated the DCPS is an institutional system of officers being told not to report crimes on campus. You can also go back to December 2020. Same story. Statewide grand jury pointed sharply at DCPS as an example of how not to handle crime reporting. They accused the district of underreporting crimes inside the schools. Quote, "The district has proven either unwilling or incapable of rationally implementing what was no doubt well-intended legislation." It is time to rein in runaway stagecoach three and a half years ago. This is sweeping it under the rug. This is not protecting our students. It's protecting jobs. Now at DA, we're seeing the same story, just different details being hidden. Students being abused have lifelong impact and consequences. There was just 50 backlog cases recently introduced. Manny Diaz last week called these unacceptable, putting the health and safety and welfare of students in jeopardy. Not only did the superintendent drop the ball on this, but she was complicit in allowing the abuse to continue. This isn't about the superintendent's race. This isn't about her being a female, and this isn't a witch hunt. This is about dereliction of duty of the superintendent protecting our students. We need leadership to stop this. In listening to the OCG last Tuesday meeting, he said they were selecting James Cole because he had no ties to the DCPS. This is the same firm that represented DCPS in the lawsuit against the state of Florida with the mask mandates. He was not being transparent. This was very, very misleading to the board and to us as a public. To hear there being talk of somebody being transferred or being in-house is not punishment. Admin at DA and all the way up to the superintendent need to be removed.
Thanks.
Please protect our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your time's up. Next in line is Benjamin Dixon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members, General Counsel.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board members, General Counsel, Madam Superintendent. My name is LaShonda LJ Holloway, and I stand here not only as a proud product of the Duval County Public Schools, but also as a community stakeholder who is very concerned about the witch hunt that is currently taking place in Duval County Public Schools. I don't have to tell you that in a schools' board system that is as large as ours with a $1.3 billion budget with more than 126,000 students and more than 12,000 employees, you cannot expect one person to be in 204 schools. You cannot expect one person to be in 204 schools. And so I want to publicly applaud the superintendent for not only having the courage, and again, I say the courage, to do what her predecessors did not do. We know that the employee who resigned, of course, was charged initially in 2006. Prior superintendents do not do that. And if we cared about the health, safety, and general welfare of our students, one, we would not be having an emergency meeting during testing. Two, we would certainly not be entertaining the idea of even accepting a resignation from a superintendent who has been named Superintendent of the Year twice. It not only disturbs our students' education, we should not have a board that's going on a media, a media, which a media frenzy, if you would. It's embarrassing. It is embarrassing. We all know that the Florida Constitution, Article 9, Section 4, what it states, I believe that this is not only overreach, but one, that we have proper notice for this meeting, but secondly, the public deserves transparency. The public deserves transparency, and we should allow an investigation to be completed before we rush to judgment. Further, the students who graduate in 2023 deserve to not only have the superintendent's name on their diplomas, but we should also allow the investigation to play out, and it should also be a full and complete investigation. I want to say to this twice, twice-named state superintendent, thank you for not only improving the graduation rates in Duval County Public Schools. Thank you for being a leader throughout the pandemic. Thank you also for having the courage to, one, accept responsibility and also to make appropriate management decisions for people who do not report accordingly. My name is LaShonda LJ Holloway, and I hope that you would take my comments and act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in line is Pastor Jonathan Blackburn.
Michael J. Hawke. Hawke. H-A-W-K. We shouldn't stand here and pretend that what's going on here between the board and the superintendent is in any way about what is taking place at Douglas Anderson. What's going on at Douglas Anderson has been going on there for years, and to say that we're looking at her because of what's going on there is false. If we want to look to blame, we should look at those who have been in the district for some length of time, who may be on the school board as well right now. So if it's not about Douglas Anderson, then what is it about? It is about, we hired a superintendent, and we wanted her to lead, but we wanted her to lead by us telling her what to do. And when she didn't fall in line and lead the way that the powers that be from Duval to Tallahassee wanted her to lead, then we decided we need to get rid of her. When she led in a manner that said, even though the governor said no masks, but COVID rates were going up, so she said, "I think our children need to wear masks," it wasn't about ideology, it was about the safety of the kids. But because the powers that be say, "Oh, wait a minute. You have to do what I say," then therefore we have to try to get rid of this individual. When she led in a manner that brought us the half-cent sales tax, the powers that be in this city were not very happy. I stood in a city council meeting, actually got kicked out of a city council meeting, while people stood there and made statements about fiduciary responsibility when all they needed to do was put it on the ballot. I'm an insurance agent. I'm a fiduciary. They had no fiduciary responsibility at all because all it meant was put it on the ballot. Shell means shell, not made. When the powers that be wanted her, well, there's an issue I'm thinking also with the powers that be because there's no longer any Confederate-named schools in our district. There are those who are sitting there who vehemently voted against it, who I'm sure will also be those who are ready to accept any resignation that the superintendent wants to turn in. So I would like to say to those who have been endorsed by, supported by, or even threatened by the powers that be that come out of Tallahassee, that there are those of us who are going to do everything legally possible to make sure that your personal agendas that are coming not from Duval, Team Duval, not Leon.
Thank you. You can, if you have one more sentence to finish, or you can submit the balance of your remarks to the...
That are coming from Duval, we're going to do everything we can to thwart your attempts.
Thank you.
But I'll see you tonight.
And we're going to call this person to the speakers as well, but we want to formally recognize we have Councilwoman Brenda Priestley Jackson. And again, Ms. Prince Priestley Jackson, if you want to move over to the speaker area. But as always, we appreciate having city council members here and former board chair, former board member as well.
Good afternoon. My name is Benjamin Dixon. I am a former school teacher in Duval County. I am a pastor, a community stakeholder, and a resident of Duval County. And I want to begin by offering an apology to a distinguished superintendent. I apologize because we weren't ready early enough to fend off this attack. We should have been prepared when we saw what was done in Berkeley County, South Carolina, when an organization that has representatives here today ensured that the first black superintendent of that county was ousted. Not after months, but after they got power, the night that they got power, when they elected these joyful warriors to the school board, they ousted the first black superintendent. We should have known that it was not going to stop there. We should have been prepared when we saw a governor who, while we're talking about protecting children, attacked children on television for wearing masks. We should have known that anyone who stood up to him was going to face a challenge. Melissa Ross from the local NPR stated on Friday that out of 12 of the districts that challenged this governor's mask mandate, or his opposition to mask, only five remained. That is an efficient agenda of revenge that we would expect from a former JAG officer who oversaw torture at Guantanamo Bay. This is the type of thing that we should have been prepared for, but we weren't. But we will be next time because we know who's involved, we know the MO, we know how you operate, we know that you show up to school board meetings, so we're going to show up to school board meetings. We know that you are rallying the vote to oust people who you think are going to teach critical race theory, people whose books you want to ban. We know what's going on, and so we are going to be prepared. We were not prepared this time. I'll leave you with a scripture in the Book of Micah. It says, "Rejoice not over me, my enemies, when I stumble and fall, for we shall arise." And so while we may not be able to prevent the superintendent from offering her resignation, we can certainly learn from the lessons of who's involved, who's doing it, and why, and make sure that we are prepared as a people to make sure this never happens again.
Thank you. Next up is... I'm supposed to stay in order, but please come.
Y'all are good. We appreciate you being here as well, as always.
This came up...
I will say, I will say, former board chair Priestley Jackson knows the area really well, so thank you.
And if I may, this came up at the last meeting. I have a timestamp, and I'm supposed to keep the cards in timestamp order. That's the only reason I'm calling in the order that I'm...
Oh, yeah, I think it was just a misunderstanding. I think when you recognized there was a councilperson, I didn't know, so I was just referring to her.
So you are Pastor Jonathan Blackburn. We have Councilwoman Priestley Jackson, and then behind the Councilwoman, we have Reverend Aaron Flag, who should be coming up. Okay, thank you.
So Pastor Jonathan Blackburn, again, representing the Baptist Ministers Conference, and above all else, definitely support the well-being and welfare of children within the Duval County School Board. And with that being said, it's just, people who do the right thing need an advocate. And I've been pleased, as the new president, to try to kind of see this matter through as much as I can. Just want the superintendent to know that she does have people who advocate for the work that she has done. I'm overwhelmed, and I don't bear the responsibility of the issues related to this education, Board of Education. We've seen students who have died as a result of some issues that have surrounded this Board of Education. And so whatever we need to do to support and follow things through that sort our children flourish, but what we don't want to do is get rid of the people that help us to become all that we can be. Not once have I ever seen the superintendent back away from any conversation or issue. And I believe that we can address the things that are ailing us and get through them if we are honest about them. But if our motives are about something else, comments about sexuality are relevant to today, but the issues of Douglas Anderson seem like they stem back generations and the issues of this school. And so we need to be honest about our motives. Are they really about our children? Are they really about our personal prejudices and motives? And so if we want to be just, let's make it about the children and not about people who are doing the things that they need to do.
Thank you. Next in line is Isaiah Rumlin.
Good evening. I am Brenda Priestley Jackson, and I stand before you as the daughter of a longtime retired Duval County Public School teacher, the wife of a current school teacher, the mother of four proud Duval County graduates, a graduate myself, and your neighbor today, to Dr. Coker, school board members, Dr. Green, and neighbors watching. As you know, you are entrusted with the policy governance and leadership of a school district for about 130,000 students, 8,000-plus teachers, 7,000 other employees, and 1 million neighbors in Jacksonville, Duval County, Florida. I am certain that you are mindful of the most sacrosanct and impactful time of the year. We are in the midst of district-wide and state testing, and school ends one month from today when those young people who experience the first year of uninterrupted education and their parents will have an opportunity to celebrate and evaluate what looks like returning back to normal. So today I want to say thank you to Dr. Green for taking on the tough challenges that many of us were not able to take on. Thank you for the one-half cent sales tax to replace and modernize lone dilapidated schools that we continue to build long after Brown 1 and Brown 2. Thank you for the millage increase that will pay veteran teachers, athletics, and arts teachers more. I support council, school board members, your investigation, and ask you to let it be conducted with quality, integrity, and an eye towards the truth. In closing, I had a chance to read Proverbs 1, 3 through 5 today, and I thought it was very fitting. You are charged with doing what is right and just and fair. You're also charged with imparting knowledge and discretion to the young. Keep our students, teachers, parents, neighbors front and center. And remember that each of us is better because Dr. Green passed along this way and took on the tough fights and challenges. We appreciate your sacrifice, your time, and you're making our city and each of us better.
Just a reminder about not calling by name. That's to help with not calling out people publicly and whatnot. That was all very positive, and we appreciate those comments, but just a reminder of that.
So we have Reverend Flag, followed by Isaiah Rumlin, followed by Kathleen Murray.
God be all the glory. I'm Reverend Aaron Flag.
Will you move the mic down? We want to make sure we hear every word. Thank you so much.
You always tell me that I'm short and tall people.
I appreciate it. I'm in the category with you.
Give it honor to God, who has, still is, and always will be doing great things. Ray Charles and Stevie Wonder can see what's going on here, both of them blind. But God sits high and looks low. I look at a lot of Westerns, and they have the wrong man in jail, and the perpetrator, the one that did it, is down at the bar getting all the boys liquored up, telling them, "Let's go get him out of lynching." And they all come down, but the one that's getting, that's buying the liquor, that's the one that did the crime. But here comes all of the citizens that Marsha Dillon then took care of and did things for, received things from Marsha Dillon, and they want to take the prison out and hang them. There was another instance in the Bible wherein as the people in power brought somebody to Jesus, and they, "What should we do?" They could have handled that before, but they didn't. Jesus didn't say nothing. He just rolled in the, rolled in the ground. Then he said, "Let him that be without sin, let him that be without sin cast the first stone." It's the same Jesus now as it was then. Amen.
Thank you. So we have Mr. Rumlin, followed by Kathleen Murray, followed by Beverly Banta, who is
Good afternoon. Isaiah Rumlin, President of the Jacksonville Branch and NAACP. My question is, why are we here today? Emergency meeting. A meeting was called, a meeting called without at least 48 hours' notice to the public for a particular issue when the chairperson or board members determined that an issue is an emergency or urgent public necessity as defined by law as an immediate danger to public health, safety, or welfare. The meeting notice for an emergency meeting would be posted at least two hours prior to the time of the emergency meeting. Emergency meeting would be afforded the most appropriate and effective notice under the circumstances. That is your board policy, 2.26. Now, we are here, and we know why we're here. We are here because of a evil governor who have his list on all school board in the state of Florida. Look at what's happened in Tallahassee. Look at, look at what's happened down in South Florida. All over this state, the governor want to rule you, 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 you. When you go up against him, what does he do? Put you on a hit list. He get rid of you. If he can't get rid of you, what does he do? Pass legislation. Look at this and that. Going to do the same thing to you if you don't stand up to him. When are we going to stand up to this governor in the state of Florida? We all know him, and we know what he's about, and it's wrong, and y'all need to do the right thing in keeping Dr. Green as superintendent of the Duval County Public School System. One mil. Teacher of the Year. But what we have, and what's happening, is totally outrageous and political. It may be your day today, but mine is tomorrow. I may be on the hit list. You may be on the hit list. You may be on the hit list. You may be on the hit list. All of you. And if you don't stand up to this governor, we're in terrible, or we're living in terrible times in this state, and not only in this state, but all over this country.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Murray, Executive Director for Duval County Citizens Defending Freedom. I had originally planned to speak on a different topic, still on the agenda today, but on the way to the meeting, I received a call from two parents who are not members of our organizations. In the interest of their daughter's privacy, they've elected to stay home, but asked if I would ask the following questions. How is it possible that the DCPS Police Department does not have a female police officer or detective in the sexual assault department? And how is it that they are not offering up the option to have a female officer unless asked? Prior to entering the auditorium, I spoke with the DCPS officer that explained to me the legal challenges of hiring officers by gender, especially with the new requirements that you now have with the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas case. More than 25 years ago, I was sexually harassed repeatedly as an officer in the Navy on a ship. Telling the second-in-command would have been pointless because he had repeatedly said in public to the officers in the wardroom that women didn't belong at sea, certainly not on a warship. Like a lot of victims, I blamed myself, and I didn't say anything until after I left the ship, another junior officer contacted me and told me of the same abuse. It was then that I decided to step up and say something. Later, she recanted her story, by the way. The reason I didn't say anything was because I blamed myself, like a lot of victims do, and the daughter of this couple that called me on the way here has blamed herself for over 10 years. When she was finally contacted by DCPS, it was by a male officer. The abuse at Douglas Anderson came at the hands of a male teacher. You can all understand the conflict that this young woman has had. She has tried to move on, but again is concerned about speaking again to a male officer. 25 years ago, there were only 10 women department heads in the surface Navy besides me, serving at sea. Today, I'm delighted to report that there are many women serving throughout the Navy, and in fact, the next incoming superintendent of the Naval Academy, my alma mater, is a woman, and the next Chief of Naval Operations is supposed to be a woman as well. Both of these fine ladies I served with 25 years ago. Yes, things have changed in the military, but there's still many changes that need to be made in DCPS with respect to how we care for the victims of sexual abuse. Finally, drawing from my 24 years in the Navy, I would like to say that leadership is all about accountability, and despite the friendships you may have with the superintendent who is beloved by many people here, we must hold our leaders accountable. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Beverly Banta, and my best friends call me Grandma. So I have a dream. I look forward to the day when I can say that our school board uses the utmost integrity in their decisions. Integrity, doing the right thing and doing it right. I look forward to the day when lawful consequences will be carried out for unlawful behavior. I look forward to the day when we know our children are first and foremost the reason for every decision that the school board makes. I am praying that that day comes very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Pierce is going to read the waive cards.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We have five individuals who have waived their right to speak. Ed Williams writes that he is against pedophiles and supports the bathroom bill. Dwight Carlson is in support of removing Dr. Green from superintendent. Suzanne Jenkins supports continued focus of the investigation regarding DA issues. Elizabeth Anderson is in opposition of pushing out Dr. Green, and Tawana Latrice Carmichael supports Dr. Diana Green.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers for this afternoon. We're going to move on to the discussion agenda at this time. Item number one for the discussion agenda includes the superintendent's contract. The recommendation is that the board vote to approve the recommendation by the Office of General Counsel as it relates to the superintendent's employment. I ask for a motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
I have a second by Board Member Carney. In order to start the discussion at this time, I would like to ask that John Phillips from the Office of General Counsel come forward to discuss exactly what has led us to this moment and where we are with items. Because I think there's, you know, if you could help us, help the public understand where we are in this moment.
Sure, sure. Through the chair. We've been in talks with the superintendent's lawyers for days, late into the evening and all day today, and it's my understanding, I'm sorry?
If you'll make sure the mic is right near you so that everyone can hear. Thank you.
And it's my understanding that we have a signed agreement that could be put in front of you for your consideration and potential approval. But because of the lateness of the hour, I wasn't able to get copies to everybody in advance of this meeting. And so in the interest of, I have hard copies, and I don't know who's seen it and who hasn't. In the interest of, it might be the most efficient way to handle this is perhaps to take a brief recess so people can read it, and then we can talk about it with a lot more efficiency once people see what's in the agreement.
All right, and I appreciate that. At this time, given the fact that we do have copiers in the building, so I know we can make copies.
Oh, I've got, I've got copies for everybody. I just, they just, you know, it's, it's a multi-page document, so you can't read it in 30 seconds, so you might want to take-
Would 10 minutes?
10 minutes would be fine.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Board Member Jones, yes.
Thank you. To the chair, what's the purpose in doing it today? What's the emergency? I mean, we haven't seen anything. We haven't had time to digest it. If we, even if we've gotten it, we haven't had time to digest it, think it through. This is an emergency meeting. I voted against the agenda because I felt like it was not a true emergency, emergency, legally emergency, but not in the spirit of the law. So I'm not prepared to vote for an agreement, a settlement agreement, that I have not seen, and I only have 10 minutes to review.
I understand. The emergency part of that, I'm going to have to defer to Board Counsel. And it is, of course, of no concern, it's not any concern of mine whether we do this now or later. I'm merely asked to be here for this meeting. You know, I had hoped to have a signed agreement hours ago, but it, but as you can imagine, when lawyers start talking back and forth and exchanging drafts, it can sometimes take a while, and in this case, it did take a while. My suggestion would be to take the recess, take a look at the agreement, and then, you know, then whether you want to go forward with the meeting is going to be up to the board, I would imagine.
Let's do this, because we do have counsel here. I saw Ms. Cook as well somewhere was here as well. Let's go ahead and take, let's do a 15-minute recess to give everyone copies. And then the reality is, the Office of General Counsel is here, so we could ask any questions that we have, so we might as well use the space. And then we'll determine where we go from there. We do have an item on, that has been motioned and seconded that is on the floor at this point, so we do have that on the floor. But let's go ahead and take 15 minutes at this time. And again, let's use the time that we have with the Office of General Counsel to ask questions after we digest the item at hand. I know a number of us have been on the phone with Office of General Counsel as well, so, but let's go ahead. We want to take-
One of the reasons I know that I was told that OGC wanted us to have this emergency meeting, and now OGC is telling us that that's not the case. So I'm wondering, we have an emergency meeting, though we have a board meeting in less than, what, three hours? So I'm just interested about the timing of where we are. I will more than happily take a very critical document that really, really determines the fate and direction of our district, and we're going to take 15 minutes to go over that? I'm just a little taken aback by that, by us being able to have the respect of somebody to not have more than 15 minutes to determine their fate. I am just a little concerned by that as a board member, and my constituents in my community, I'm sure, have many questions about this as well. And this is the first opportunity, the first opportunity that any of us, any of us have had the opportunity to talk about this at all. And we said we were talking about her retiring. If that is the case, that is a very smooth and easy process. But obviously, that is not the case that we're in right now. We're not talking about that because obviously, things are happening behind doors and back channels, and people are having conversations, and we're here at this dais because of that. So the fact that we're going to have 15 minutes to discuss it is very, very troubling for me, and I will take that opportunity to look at it because it's on the floor, but I wanted to put that on the record.
And I appreciate, absolutely appreciate those comments. I'm going to take one more comment from Board Member Hershey, then we're going to take a 15-minute recess. And then again, what I said was, we'll come back, we will ask questions because we have Office of General Counsel here. We do have a motion on the floor that we have to contend with as well, though.
I appreciate the perplexion of why we are here. But I recall about 30 days ago, an event that took place that created the perfect storm. And I am also aware, as are, as every person on this dais, except for Board Member Carney, was not on the board at that time when we received the grand jury final report. And so based upon the information that I have done, my own personal research, I have been in conversation with legal counsel, I have dug into, and honest to God, I wish I could point fingers at only past superintendents and only past leadership, but I am responsible for my time on this board and under my watch. I cannot let this go any further without conversation. And so for having said that, that is my urgency, and it's not just about Douglas Anderson. It's a bigger conversation about the grand jury report, and that was the perfect storm. So I am ready to take that 15-minute break and come back for further dialogue.
All right. We were going to stand in recess at this time until 2:11, and again, we have Office of General Counsel here to answer questions after that time. of General Counsel here to answer questions after that time. (end of transcript) I'm going to ask that everyone return to their seats at this time. If everyone could return to their seats. Mr. Colbert, if you would return to your seat at this time. Thank you. Again, we're asking that people return to their seats at this time, if they're staying with us, and we appreciate those that have joined us as always. Thank you so much. This time, we're going to bring Office of General Counsel John Phillips back up to the podium so that we can have any questions. Wait for Dr. Green to come up, as always. All right. We've had some time, and I double-checked with board members that were still reading, and they said that they were good and ready for discussion. So at this time, questions for Office of General Counsel in regards to the contract, the steps that we've gotten taken to getting to this moment in terms of negotiation, those types of items. Any questions for Office of General Counsel? Board Member Hershey.
Thank you. Through the chair, on page two, where it mentions terms and then gives a lump sum amount, is that severance pay?
Her contract provides for a severance pay under various scenarios, none of which are exactly what's happening here. The state maximum is 20 weeks, and that's what this number is. You can call it a settlement payment, or severance pay, whatever you want. It doesn't really matter. Under the agreement, if approved, she would be entitled to this payment of 20 weeks.
Again, if you'll, can you repeat the last part of that in the microphone?
Under the agreement, regardless of what you would call it, if this, if this, I didn't know this microphone worked like a rock star microphone, where you actually have to put your lips on it.
You're doing great, and to the audience, thank you for working with us. We're very grateful.
Whatever you want to call it, under state law, you can pay 20 weeks of severance or settlement payment, whatever you'd like to characterize it as. And that's what this payment is, if this agreement is approved. This is a retirement and settlement agreement. And so the question is, under what circumstances and when should the retirement take effect, and what happens based upon the dates of the retirement in the document? So, yes, if you, yeah, it's severance payment.
My follow-up, so through the chair to Legal Counsel, is there any negotiation on that timeframe? I am familiar with the state statute, and I know it's up two, but we're just going to give the maximum without discussing any potential cause that may suggest a reduced amount.
Well, through the chair, under the contract that the superintendent signed, she would be entitled to quite a bit more than that. If the contract were to go to its 2025 date. So whenever you're negotiating a separation or retirement, you have to start somewhere. And the product of our negotiations was that she would be entitled to 20 weeks. I think you could assume that there was probably a desire for a considerably larger amount of severance, but we held firm at 20 weeks.
Thank you for this time.
Board Member Willie.
Through the chair. So we're just going to go straight into this contract and not talk about why we are in this room. I'm trying, I'm just trying to, for me, in the posture that I'm in, I need to be able to make a decision, I want to understand the motivations of some of my other, my colleagues on this board to understand why we are here. Because to move on and just start talking about numbers in the contract sort of negates the conversation around how are we here? How are we right here, and what are we doing right now? So I would love for that, that to be answered, if folks are willing to do that. And then I do have a question for Counsel.
All right. Let me do a double-check because we do have, there may have been people that were ready to ask questions. Let me go ahead and take those questions. And my thought was, we were going to do that and then switch to the discussion amongst the board. And again, I'm not intending not to, but let's clear the questions if anybody had them right now, and then we can move to that.
Through the chair, I have a question on the floor. So my question is now on the floor in the midst of this discussion. So if folks are willing to do that, they can answer that now.
I'll start. So the grand jury report, the grand jury was organized in 2019 after the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas tragic incident. That report nailed us in the third report for under-reporting, and during that time, we were able to point fingers back and say, not on our watch, not under this current leadership. Then the final report became public in 2022, and everybody at this dais, with the exception of Board Member Carney, because she was not yet elected, sat in a workshop in Room 613 after that final report came out, which the first 16 pages of that final report said, oh, and there was one district that was so bad with under-reporting, we've got to tell you about it. It was Duval County. That's my paraphrase, not a direct quote. Then at the very end, well, when Duval County was mentioned again, on a page 104, or somewhere between 99 and 104, it talked about how we had changed leadership with our chief of police, and it indicated that perhaps there was further house cleaning to be done. And at that workshop that every member at this dais participated in the conversation of, again, with the exception of Board Member Carney, it was, we recognized the fact that the district had under-reported, we could easily point to previous leadership and previous school boards. Then unfortunately, the end of March happened, and we had the arrest of a teacher, which I'm going to reiterate created the perfect storm that caused some digging. And when you look at it, and you're, the shock and awe of it being in 2023, and then going back, I did my homework, noticed report in 2021, which we failed to report on our watch, after we'd already gotten in trouble with the grand jury report, the third report that came out, failed to report. That's on our watch. And we promised this community that we would do better, we would put better systems in place to ensure the safety and security of our students. That's the reason this issue is very, I think, important for the safety and security, not only for our students, but for our community, to understand that we, as a board, said that we were going to do better. We recognized what was wrong in the past, and we are going to correct it, but in 2021, we have failure to report on this teacher who got arrested in 2023. That's on my watch. I took a state oath to uphold the laws of the state. I've looked at state statute. You can have 30 days to report or 24 hours to report, depending upon the incident. What's 2020? We didn't report it. Those are my concerns because we had been identified as having flaws and problems within our system. We committed to change that, and obviously, when 2023 happened, it had not changed and had not improved, and that is my concern. And unfortunately, that was on Dr. Green's watch.
Hold on. I've got Board Member Joyce. We're going to come back around, I will come back to you, I promise, I will, but I've got Board Member Joyce.
I'm going to reiterate what Board Member Hershey said. We have a responsibility as a board. And I'm going to just, I have state statute pulled up right now in front, and I'm going to read it so everybody is very clear as to my position, and I believe it's just maybe some other people's position, I don't care. This is my personal opinion, this is what the state statute says. Our school board is responsible to, for records and reports. Provide for the up, the keeping of all necessary records and the making of all needed or required reports as follows. Require all employees to keep accurately all records and to make promptly, in the proper form, all reports required by law or by rules of the State Board of Education. Require that the district superintendent, school superintendent prepare all reports to the Department of Education that may be required by law or rules of the State Board of Education. And then you can go, that's where we're going to start, you can go down, and at the bottom, it says, of that particular paragraph, any member of the district school board who is responsible for the violation
Taken to getting to this moment in terms of negotiation, those types of items. Any questions for Office of General Counsel? Board Member Hershey?
Thank you. Through the, through the chair, on page two where it mentions terms and then gives a lump sum amount, is that severance pay?
Her contract provides for a severance pay on, under various scenarios, none of which are exactly what's happening here. This, the state maximum is 20 weeks, and that's what this number is. You can call it a settlement payment or severance pay, whatever you want. Doesn't really matter. Under the agreement, if approved, she would be entitled to this payment of 20 weeks.
Again, if you'll, can you repeat the last part of that in the microphone?
Sorry. Under the agreement, regardless of what you would call it, if, if this, if this, I didn't know this microphone worked like a rock star microphone where you actually have to put your lips on it.
You're doing great. And to the audience, thank you for working with us. We're very grateful.
Whatever you want to call it, under state law, you can pay 20 weeks of severance or settlement payment, whatever you'd like to characterize it as. And that's what this payment is if this agreement is approved. This, this is a retirement and settlement agreement. And so the question is, under what circumstances and when should the retirement take effect? And what happens based upon the dates of the retirement in the document? So, yes, if you, you, yeah, it's severance payment.
Mike, I have a follow-up. So through the chair to legal counsel. Is there any negotiation on that timeframe? I am familiar with the, the state statute, and I know it's up two, but we're just going to give the maximum without discussing any potential cause that may suggest a reduced amount?
Well, through the chair. Under the contract that the superintendent signed, she would be entitled to quite a bit more than that. If the contract were to go to its 2025 date. So whenever you're negotiating a separation or retirement, you have to start somewhere. And the product of our negotiations was that she would be entitled to 20 weeks. I think you could assume that there was probably a desire for a considerably larger amount of severance, but we held firm at 20 weeks.
Thank you for this time.
Board Member Willie.
Through the chair. So we're just going to go straight into this contract and not talk about why we are in this room. I'm trying, I'm just trying to, try, for me, in the posture that I'm in, I need to, to be able to make a decision. I want to understand the motivations of some of the, my other, my colleagues on this board to understand why we are here. Because to move on and just start talking about numbers in the contracts already negates the conversation around, how, how are we here? How are we right here? And what are we doing right now? So I would love for that, that to be answered, if folks are willing to do that. And then I do have a question for, for counsel.
All right. Let me do a double check because we do have, there may have been people that were ready to ask questions. Let me go ahead and take those questions. And my thought was, we were going to do that and then switch to the discussion amongst the board. And again, I'm not intending not to, but let's clear the questions if anybody had them right now, and then we can move to that.
Through the chair, I have a question on the floor. So my question is now on the floor in the midst of this discussion. So if folks are willing to do that, they can answer that now.
I'll start. So the Green jury report, the Green jury was organized in 2019 after the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas tragic incident. That report nailed us in the third report for underreporting. And during that time, we were able to point fingers back and say, not on our watch, not under this current leadership. Then the final report became public in 2022. And everybody at this dais, with the exception of Board Member Carney, because she was not yet elected, sat in a workshop in room 613 after that final report came out, which the first 16 pages of that final report said, oh, and there was one district that was so bad with underreporting. We've got to tell you about it. It was Duval County. That's my paraphrase. Not a direct quote. Then at the very end, well, when Duval County was mentioned again, on a page 104, or somewhere between 99 and 104, it talked about how we had changed leadership with our chief of police. And it indicated that perhaps there was further house cleaning to be done. And at that workshop that every member at this dais participated in the conversation of, again, with the exception of Board Member Carney, it was, we recognized the fact that the district had underreported. We could easily point to previous leadership and previous school boards. Then unfortunately, the end of March happened and we had the arrest of a teacher, which I'm going to reiterate, created the perfect storm that caused some digging. And when you look at it and you're, the shock and awe of it being in 2023, and then going back, I did my homework, noticed report in 2021, which we failed to report on our watch after we'd already gotten in trouble with the grand jury report, the third report that came out, failed to report. That's on our watch. And we promised this community that we would do better. We would put better systems in place to ensure the safety and security of our students. That's the reason this issue is very, I think, important for the safety and security, not only for our students, but for our community to understand that we, as a board, said that we were going to do better. We recognized what was wrong in the past, and we are going to correct it. But in 2021, we have failure to report on this teacher who got arrested in 2023. That's on my watch. I took a state oath to uphold the laws of the state. I've looked at state statute. You can have 30 days to report or 24 hours to report depending upon the incident. What's 2020? We didn't report it. Those are my concerns because we had been identified as having flaws and problems within our system. We committed to change that. And obviously, when 2023 happened, it had not changed and had not improved. And that is my concern. And unfortunately, that was on Dr. Green's watch.
I've got Board Member Joyce. We're going to come back around. I will come back to you, I promise, I will. But I've got Board Member Joyce.
I'm going to reiterate what Board Member Hershey said. We have a responsibility as a board. And I'm going to just, I have state statute pulled up right now in front, and I'm going to read it. So everybody is very clear as to my position, and I believe it's just maybe some other people's position. I don't care. This is my personal opinion. This is what the state statute says. Our school board is responsible to, for records and reports. Provide for the up, the keeping of all necessary records and the making of all needed or required reports as follows. Require all employees to keep accurately all records and to make promptly, in the proper form, all reports required by law or by rules of the State Board of Education. Require that the district superintendent, school superintendent, prepare all reports to the Department of Education that may be required by law or rules of the State Board of Education. And then you can go, that's where we're going to start. You can go down, and at the bottom, it says of that particular paragraph, any member of the district school board who is responsible for the violation of this provision is subject to suspension and removal. That is the state law. That is why we're here, because we, as a board, have failed. We have one employee. We have failed. And I will say, on the piggyback of that comment, when I was elected to the board in 2018, I ran on discipline. I ran on student, school safety. And whenever I sat at this board, at a board workshop, that first board workshop where we had our first student discipline report, I asked a question. I said, how many fights have been in our school system, in our middle school and our high schools this year? Mind you, I was an employee in the school system, working at a middle school for a couple of months before I was elected. The report I got back said there were six fights at Stillwell that year. There were six fights the first week of school. I knew we were underreporting. And so when I got the grand jury report, I knew the report was accurate. We were in a terrible situation of reporting to the district. And now we have 50 incidences that were just reported and dating back for three years. That is a lack of leadership. That is on our board. And that's why I feel like it's important we have this discussion today. Because at the end of the day, it's our responsibility.
Board Member Willie, and then I'm going to swing over to this side for anybody as well.
So many of the, the comments that we're talking about are sort of under the guise of DA, which we've already hired a third-party investigator to sort of do a full-on investigation of that. So what we're talking about with the 50 cases and the 2021 reporting, we actually need to do a full-on investigation. Because we can get a letter from the state every day. But that doesn't mean though, we have to, we have to make sure that we're fact-checking and making sure all of those things are accurate. We, in addition, as a board, this board, hired a third party to actually look at all of that for us. That's what we did as a board. We took that on ourselves to hire a third party to look into all of this. And they came back and said, we are, we're, we're doing great. And in addition to that, Office of Safe Schools has come back and also given us a good report. So I am, at this point, if we say we've done nothing, that is not the case at all. In fact, we've put many a things in place, processes in place to do that. So there are, there are things that we, we can talk about. But if this is couched under the DA investigation, I truly believe that we should actually allow the investigation to happen. And that is not happening right now. We are actually saying, we're the jury, and we're the judge, and we're deciding. And that's, I just don't understand our order of operations in our process. Because if we're here today to talk about that, this is, and this is the first time we're talking about it, I feel like that should have been the topic of the meeting. And that's not the topic of this meeting. That's not. That's not what the topic of this meeting is today. So it's confusing to the public who wants to know what we're talking about. And yet now we're saying, well, this is what it's really about. We are, we are an elected body to be transparent to our public. And now we're saying, this is not, it's not really what's on this agenda. It's what, this is what it's really about today. And that's really confusing to me. And if it's confusing to me, I'm very well sure it's confusing to the people who are sitting in this audience who are watching online. So, and so what, what all we've said, we can couch it under the DA investigation. Or if we're going to pull it out, then we can talk about the processes that we've taken as a board and the superintendent, director superintendent, to do as such. And if you remove the head of, the head of the police department and the person who's in charge of that office, that is cleaning house. Nobody's, is there anymore? Nobody's there anymore in those leadership positions. So we have taken those letters that were quite scathing and unprofessional, by the way, from the grand jury. And now we've taken it, we've done a lot of things around it. We've reached out to third-party and party folks to make sure that we're not doing it ourselves. We've had the Office of Safe Schools come and visit. So I'm, I, I'm, I'm just at a loss.
Coming over here, Board Member Pearson.
I have a couple of questions for any legal counsel who would like to answer these through the chair. First question is, is there any difference between taking action and filing a report? So that's one. And then I'll give you context. If I am remembering correctly, on the November incident, that is the one that was said was not reported, November of '21, I think, incident. I believe there was a Title IX investigation initiated by a staff person at the school. And then the information was sent to the Department of Children and Families and was returned to the district as something like not actionable. Those might not have been the words, but something like not actionable. So I guess, one, am I remembering, am I putting my incidences together with the right information? Two, is there a difference between not taking action or taking action and not reporting or not reporting? And then what does the district do when they send something up to the next level and it's returned as not actionable?
Through the chair, I'm not familiar with the details of that particular incident, and perhaps Mr. Poole is. There is a difference between taking action and filing a report. Just analogously, and speaking in general and not with reference to that particular report. If you get a report of misconduct and it's investigated and it's properly reported, that the department would make a determination as to whether any action against that, if assuming that the accused was a teacher, any action would be taken against that teacher's license. But, so it, it would just depend upon the circumstances, you know, you, and just to remove this from, you know, any reference to the school board. So for example, the, the JSO has an internal affairs unit, right? If somebody complains to internal affairs, they do an investigation. They can either take action and recommend discipline, or they can say it's not sustained or it's unfounded. And then they will report both of those things, either one of those things, to the sheriff. And the sheriff would take disciplinary action if the sheriff felt that he should or she, if we had a female sheriff. So, yeah, in general, there could be a distinction between filing a report and taking action. It would just depend upon the exact context. Now, to be more specific to the hypothetical, your, or the facts that you're recounting, I'm going to have to defer to Mr. Poole.
I just wanted to add, there are three, to my knowledge, and when I checked it, there were three reporting, there are three reporting requirements. DCF is only one of them. Then the Office of Professional Practices in Tallahassee, and then possible Cessar. And because it was founded, you needed to do all three. But, Mr. Poole, if you could weigh in.
Through the chair.
Through the chair, that's right.
I apologize. Through the chair, it's like a syllogism. You have to say, all men are human, but not all humans are men. So you can, let's say you've got three, three potential reports. One is chapter 39, the hotline called the DCF because you think something is abuse or neglect of a child. One is perhaps a Cessar report because there's misconduct that takes place on a school campus or at an outing that may qualify for that. And the third would be potentially the Office of Professional Practices in Tallahassee through DOE because an employee, so you have a situation, you may take action against an employee for being tardy. That doesn't mean that you need to report it to DCF under chapter 39. So I think all action, all reports is some kind of action. You've taken action if you made a report. But, but not all action is necessarily reportable. Does that make sense? So I'm not sure about the specifics that you're referring to in November. But it's, I don't view those two things necessarily as being synonymous, if that, if that helps at all.
Did you have another question?
Through the chair, just, if I might supplement that answer. I know that there's been reference to the, the 50 files. But as of, as I sit here, I don't know what the contents of those files purports to be. And I did send a letter to the department on Friday on behalf of the district asking for copies of what, of those 50 files. And I have not received a response as of yet. I mean, it is, it's early, so I'm not, I didn't mean that as a criticism. But so far, I haven't heard anything back.
Thank you. Board Member Carney, did you want to add?
I just wanted to say that, like Board Member Hershey had said, I was not on the board when the grand jury report came out. But I was a community member that was participating heavily in what was going on here in Duval County Public Schools. And like most people that read that report and sat and watched the workshop, and we, we believed that there were changes being made. We believed that there were steps being taken to keep our students safe. Part of the reason that I ran for office was to keep our students safe. That was one of the things that I heavily campaigned on, was student safety. And it's not just from external sources, it's also from within. And to find out that we have been grossly underreporting now as a elected board member sitting at this dais, getting emails from parents from other schools other than Douglas Anderson about fights and no discipline and things happening over and over and over again, I'm gravely concerned that the information that we're giving to the Department of Education and the Office of Safe Schools that we're taking drastic measures to make changes is not a true statement. And now that I am a part of this board, I am, I, I am going to ensure that we are protecting our children. We have activities going on in these schools that are egregious, and nobody is being punished for them. No one's being removed. Nobody's being fired. And I'm sorry, but as a parent of two daughters, the thought of a grown man touching my child in the classroom is disgusting. And I am going to say right now that the fact that we have been letting this go on for almost 20 years, 20 years. I don't care if it's DA, I don't care if it's Paxton, I don't care if it's Fletcher High School. Not one of these teachers that have ever done anything like this should have, be able to keep their jobs after the first incident. They should be arrested and charged and removed from the classroom. And so I don't know what, I don't know what, I don't know how we move forward here other than to make drastic changes within the district. We have got to protect our children. That is our number one job, and we have got to do something about it. We can't just say we're doing it. We actually have to do it.
Board Member Hershey. I just would like to go back and say that I did meet with Dr. Green about a week and a half ago. And she shared with me at that time her intent to retire. And actually, I've spent the past week and a half or so anticipating an announcement of that retirement. I have been in conversation with the Office of General Counsel, as well as our board counsel. And it's been my understanding that, again, based upon my conversation with Dr. Green, she had already come to a decision prior to March about a retirement in 2023. And it's, I have been under the impression that there has been conversation between the Office of General Counsel and Dr. Green's counsel as well for some period of time. And that these were the terms that she brought and agreed to. And I, I just would like to, to put that out there as well. That was information that was, that was shared with me in the conversation. And these are the terms that, that she brought to the board.
And through the chair, if I may, would ask the board, please don't reveal any conversations you've had with counsel, as those are privileged and highly confidential.
All right. I'm going to, I normally facilitate conversation. I'm going to actually make a point of item for myself at this point. And so, and then I do see, Board Member Jones, I'll come straight over to you. I do see you right there. I do think it's important for the public to know that, and this, while DA is a factor in, in this, but Dr. Green actually did come meet with me on, it was April 17th at 6:15 in the evening. And she spoke with me about her retirement. And quite honestly, she has done good work and she has given, but she was ready to go. She wanted to finish through commencement, which is what this, what this has in it. It allows her to do that. She wanted to see these students walk across the stage, and I certainly admire and respect that. And then we talked about windows after that. There was no firm anything. And so that was, my context was the notion that she was ready to retire. I mean, DA is a part of this equation, but it is not the only piece of the puzzle here. And so I want to make sure I say that, that that was part of this as well. And when this was brought to me, it sounded that she was in that space, that retirement was where she was, because she and I had had that conversation. Board Member Jones, I'll come over to you.
Madam Chair, I've moved to table this item to a time certain. That's non-debatable. Just vote.
From the staff over on the side? Because we don't discuss.
Madam Chair, that is correct.
Right.
That is a motion, not subject to debate. It's a straight-up.
Straight-up vote, correct. Are y'all able to pull it up?
Point of, point of information. Can we be clear on, on what this matter is so that we know what we're voting on?
The only motion on the floor right now is the agenda item as, as stated, as read, that had a first and a second as well.
That is correct.
To the contract. It's the item, item number one for our discussion agenda today. Certainly, take your time.
Through the chair, if I, if I might, and I don't mean this as debate, but just so everybody understands, it is my understanding that the superintendent has signed this document.
Thank you for that clarification.
Point of information.
Hold on just a second. I need to double-check with Office of General Counsel whether we can have any type of discussion or point of clarification. I'm not opposed to it, but I, I just want to clarify.
If there's a request for clarification, that's fine.
That's fine, okay.
If, through the chair to General, Office of General Counsel, if the board were to vote to table to a time certain, how would that affect Dr. Green having signed a contract, a retirement contract? And what would it do to that contract?
Through the chair, although I, my understanding is she's signed it, she hasn't delivered it to us. In any event, she would have eight days to change her mind, even if it took effect. And the agreement would only go into effect if the board approves and accepts it. So as, as, basically, it wouldn't affect anything. If, if it's tabled, we are in the same spot that we were in before the meeting started, which, which would be, there, there is no, there is no obligation on either side to do anything. And so the negoti, we could go forward with it in the future if the superintendent doesn't revoke her signature. Or we could approve it today, or we could just not do anything right now and, and see what happens.
Thank you.
And just to be, to clear, that by law, in a, in this type of matter, there is a, an eight-day period during which the retiree can change her mind. And so if the, if the board approves the agreement today, that will trigger the, the eight-day waiting period. If the board does not approve it, there's, no, the waiting period will not have been triggered.
I need to amend the motion to a time certain being Monday at 2, a meeting at 2 o'clock on Monday.
That's approved. If y'all will include that as a part.
If y'all will include that as a part. I'm going to ask for our administrative staff to make sure you read off exactly, because it says superintendent's contract, I want you to read off exactly what we're voting on so everybody is clear.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the motion to table a time certain for Monday, May 8, 2023, at 2:00 PM for item number one, superintendent's contract.
That motion fails 3-4, so we're back to the original motion, which was on the floor, which is the agenda item as read. Any additional discussion on the agenda item, again? Board Member Joyce?
Are we discussing or are we asking questions?
I will tell you, I certainly, with Board Member Willie, went straight to discussion as his request, but there is still Office of General Counsel here, and so if you have questions for them, certainly, that's something that can occur.
Okay. So through the chair to Mr. Phillips, there was a section here that discussed additional benefits. Let's see, where was that? It was on page three, at the bottom, additional benefits. Can you just explain what those additional benefits are?
Through the chair, it just means that the superintendent would continue to get paid until her employment is formally terminated on the retirement date. So it's whatever the contract provides in terms of sick leave and benefits and annual leave and that sort of thing. She's not, this doesn't, her employment's not, if this agreement is approved today, the agreement would be to, I guess, it would be that the board would approve that the chair could sign on behalf of the board this agreement, which would then create a binding contract subject to the waiting period that I've described. So it, what paragraph five means is that the payments that are discussed in this agreement aren't a replacement for her normal salary and whatnot. That's what that means.
Another question through the chair to Mr. Phillips, number four, the sick leave payout. Can, so my understanding is that she's in drop right now, and can you explain to me the, how that sick leave payout works with the year that she's in, and what would happen? Does it change every, you know, can you just explain that to me?
Through the chair, yes, I could. And when you're in drop by Board Policy 6.78, the drop changes the amount that you can get paid for your sick leave, and because the superintendent is in the third year of drop, it's 33 1/3% of the sick leave. If the superintendent were to be in the fourth year of drop, that payout would have been 50% rather than 33 1/3.
I'm going to move over to Board Member Jones at this point, you had a question?
Yes, I had a couple of questions and a comment. One, on page one, item B, effective date of this agreement is the eighth day, that's because she has eight days to reconsider?
That, through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. And then on page two, item C, retirement date, why do you, I thought it was June, is that July the 24th or June the 24th?
Through the chair, the agreement contemplates that the superintendent would continue to perform her job duties until June 2nd, and then go on annual leave, and then retire at the expiration of the annual leave to which she's entitled. And that date was originally calculated as June 20, July 21st, but it's, I was informed by the people who run the numbers here earlier today that it's, that the correct date is actually the 24th.
And I just add that the reason I made the motion to table was because I felt like we're operating like City Hall, that there has to be transparency and openness and honesty, and people trusted the school board. And here we are calling an emergency meeting with a few hours' notice, and we're not give, it's like we're trying to do something undercover, we're trying to rush to judgment. There are a lot of us who had assumed that because we had hired an investigation, it's all, if it's truly about the children, if it's truly about finding out what happened, not just at DA's but throughout the system, then we need to wait until the investigation is done. And all due respect to my board members, some of you have done your research, you've already made a conclusion, and we all know, Board Member Willie, why we're here. We're here because a governor wants the superintendent removed. Bottom line, end of story. And that narrative has been developing week after week, month after month. Look at how many superintendents have been removed statewide because of this narrative that we need to replace and change public education. How do we know that that grand jury report was not biased? Who appointed the grand jury? Who asked for the grand jury? One person, the governor. Go back and look at the facts, you know, and remember what's going on in this county, in this state. It's about removing superintendents who don't do what the governor wants done. We don't teach critical race theory. Board Member, you know we don't teach that, but yet we accept that people believe that we teach it. And the legislature took action to remove it, so we must have been teaching critical race theory. We don't teach sexual orientation, but everybody thinks we do it because the governor said we do. It's not fair, it's not right, and we haven't done, we haven't taken the time to find the real facts and have independent investigation uncover what really happened. We don't know if somebody deliberately not reported those items, if that was indeed true. We don't know what, we don't know those facts. We're blaming one person, and we're holding one person accountable. When the JEA went to sell the, the JEA, when the board went to sell it, nobody said the mayor should be removed. They didn't say that, but he, you know, but he has fewer employees accountable to him than the superintendent. It's not fair, and really, the reason behind all of this is if we're going to operate out of fear that we're going to be removed as board members, then you'll vote to remove Dr. Green. If you're going to operate out of threats that you're going to be targeted in your next election, then we'll vote to remove Dr. Green and accept his resignation, his retirement. I know you're shaking your head, but the facts are the facts. We are operating under fear as a board, we are fearful of a governor, and we're not governing and not doing what's right and best for our city, and most importantly, we're not doing what's right and best for our students that we represent.
As a point of, a point of context for myself, and again, I try to facilitate conversation, but I do jump in from time to time, as someone who has been targeted, my actions have nothing to do with that. I vote for children.
That's why I didn't call it an act.
And I do what I believe is right for children, and I will continue to do that. Would anybody else like to speak? Board Member Carney.
Through the chair to Board Member Jones. With all due respect, I'm not afraid of, for my job. What I'm afraid of is that every day that we go on, every day that-
Hold on, just a minute. From the audience, it's very clear that we ask for you not to have audible responses, we're having really good dialogue, we appreciate the civil discourse that's happening in the room, we appreciate you all being here, but we do want to be able to hear one another, and we want all of you to be able to hear what we're saying as well. We have people in the back who may not be able to hear if there's that audible response. So again, we appreciate you being here, if you'll work with us, we really do, we really appreciate it. Board Member Carney.
Thank you. Like I was saying, with all due respect, I fear, my fear is that every day that we continue to do things the same way that we've been doing them, that we're putting more children's safety at risk. And I personally am just not, if that means losing my job as a board member, then I'm willing to die on that hill. Because at the end of the day, the most important thing is that our student's safety comes first. And unfortunately, perhaps, we might have an administration in Tallahassee right now that is finally holding people accountable. And so we need to come to terms with that. It does not mean it's a witch hunt. It means that we need to have, be able to hold people accountable. I don't think that we have a governor that's running around saying, fire that superintendent, fire that superintendent. That's not what's going on. This is about student safety, following state statute, and following the law, and there is nothing more to it. I just want to be clear about that.
I'm going to come over to Board Member Joyce.
Yeah. Again, I read the state law, and the state law is very clear. As far as the allegations about the statewide grand jury, I would like to, through the chair, to Mr. Poole, could you please explain to the public and to the board exactly why is a statewide grand jury convened and what their purposes are? And do you think, really, that it can be political, a statewide grand jury? Please.
Through the chair, I would defer to my colleague John Phillips.
Okay, we'll take that audible response.
Who is far more versed in that than I will ever be, so.
Through the chair, I wasn't in that grand jury room, so it's difficult for me to know. I'm not, I'd have read the report, and certainly the allegations that were made or described were troubling. But however, I note that there's no, it's not an adversarial process, and so if the prosecutors who conducted that investigation had an agenda, I wouldn't know, and you, and I don't think I could comment on that. I noticed that the language in the report was, you know, at some points somewhat hyperbolic. Now, I don't mean to say that there was no validity to it, because I don't, I don't know, but it's a proceeding that's conducted in secrecy, and so, you know, what the witnesses said is, you know, to some degree a mystery, and what the witnesses might have said under cross-examination, which did not occur, also is a mystery. I can tell you, however, that we did meet with the law firm that we retained to do the investigation yesterday, and that they've assigned three very first-rate lawyers to do this investigation, and they are going to dig far into it, and they completely understand that they're not just limited to DA, and that the whole idea is to accomplish what Board Member Carney was talking about, to fix the problem.
Mr. Poole, looks like you want to add?
And through the chair, I wanted to hasten to add, for those who don't know, the reason I defer to John Phillips on that question is he was a longtime prosecutor for many, many years, having gone through grand jury proceedings. I've never in my life done that, so he's far more qualified than-
If I might add, I have conducted grand jury investigations myself many times, including the investigation into the Jacksonville Sheriff's Office in the early 90s, which resulted in a report that was critical of the sheriff's office at the time. So I understand how it works, and to some degree, the fairness of a grand jury investigation really just depends upon the integrity of the investigators, because there certainly are, and I'm not saying this grand, statewide grand jury lacked integrity, I'm saying, I don't, you know, I don't know what happened, and I would hesitate to pontificate about it. If they, if they approached it from a completely unbiased and completely straightforward and honest way, great. But, you know, it's hard to tell just from reading a document how that went. So I'm sorry, I can't answer the question better, but-
Well, I'll just add, I read the report. I read it over and over again. And as a employee who worked inside of a building, a middle school building, I can tell you that what was written in that report was accurate. And I'll tell you this, I had an SRO that worked at my school, that when that case and that, and the presentment where the, there was a, there was a student that was apprehended with a felony amount of marijuana, was taken to JSO, and was, our school police forced them to unarrest her, unarrest. Who ever heard of an unarrest? That, that SRO employee that was in my building said, I will not work for this district anymore. I am retiring, I am leaving, and I'm going to another county, because there is corruption in this system. So I appreciate that, but I can tell you, as a matter of fact, I've worked in this school system, and I can attest that these were true things.
And through the chair, as I said, I don't have any personal knowledge of what is true or not true in the report. I can read it like everybody else can, and that's all I can do.
Board Member Willie, you wanted to add?
Yeah, through the chair, I think it's really important that we take, of course, our personal experiences with what we've experienced, but also understand that you have to put that into the context of everything that's happening in this big system. Your story is valid, but we, we have a different person in charge of our police now. And that's also something that we have to consider when we think about the stories that keep getting brought up. And if we want to get into, like, I have three daughters too, so I don't want it to be missed that I don't take this seriously. This is super serious, very serious. In fact, we should be committing our superintendent, because under this superintendent, the person is gone. They're not in our system anymore. And now we're going to, because she did that, now, now that it's raised that flag, now she's going to take the responsibility for doing it? She, it could have happened and nobody said anything, and then we'd be three superintendents later, oh, we should have done something. But this superintendent stands up, does something, and now it's like, oh, because you did it, we're going to, we're going to, somebody's got to take the blame for it. And I think that's unfortunate, and I think we, as a board, have to ensure that we have due process. We owe that to everyone that comes in front of us, especially this superintendent. Like just this, I mean, four months ago, we were talking about an evaluation that was good, a great evaluation. We gave her an extension of her contract, and now we're sitting here today saying that where we are? And I will say this, if the superintendent has had conversations with you all about leaving and exiting early, I don't think that constitutes an emergency meeting. I think that constitutes her going out the way that she wants to go out. If these are the terms of that, great, and I want to support her in that. But my issue is with the way that this is happening underneath and not in front of the public, this is the first time they've gotten to hear any of this. So now all of a sudden, we want to make a decision. And I think there's a lot of things being thrown out, but we have to make sure we fact-check a lot of things that we're saying. We have a new person in charge of our police, like, you can take a say, and say these things about the reports that were sent, we have not done an investigation on any of those articles or those letters to ensure. We can talk about the reporting, it was not criminal. So therefore, if you even look at Cessar, is that something that we report? It was reported DCF in professional standards, so where are we left now? And if that's- And if that's, if your, yeah, if your eyes go up, maybe that wasn't. So then we definitely need to do an investigation. Like, if you have any question about that, we should be able to investigate it, not assume that letter is 100% accurate. And if we talk about politics, yes, everything has politics in it. Masks had politics, appointments have politics, school boards have politics, even books have politics. There's politics in everything that we do now, we have to understand that. But I believe we owe due process to where we are now, and I think that that's not, I don't believe that's happening.
Call the question.
All right, I have a board member who's called the question, which means we're there. I'm looking to Office of General Counsel just to confirm, as I always do. That means we've called the question, okay. No more comments?
Just through the chair, could you just clarify that, are we voting now on accepting the superintendent's-
The original, because the other item didn't pass. We are back to the original agenda item, which is that the board vote to approve the recommendation by the Office of General Counsel as it relates to the superintendent's employment.
And through the chair, and by approving the agreement that you're authorizing the chair to sign on behalf of the board so that it is signed by both parties.
So it, again, it doesn't happen without Dr. Green, who's already signed it. I'm going to look to guidance from Office of General Counsel. I just want to double check. I work, the question's been called, so they should put the motion up as original.
That's correct.
Okay.
Point of clarification. According to this sheet, which is our Roberts Rules cheat sheet, for those who don't know, and it's laminated. 16 on the, on side one, closed debate. I move the previous question, is what you would say, so that sounds like what was said. It needs a second, and then a two-thirds vote to call the question. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, I grew up on a dirt road in Hilliard, Florida, so I think you're right.
This is why I always look at Office of General Counsel. All right, so, so at this time, is there a second to the item that Board Member Hershey has put on the table?
My question is, are we back to the contract and discussion? Are we voting on the contract?
Vote on the motion.
We're voting on the motion to call the question, so that we can either get back to it or not.
Okay.
Okay? So would you like to make your motion again? Or call the question?
Call the question to vote on the item.
Do I have a-
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
To vote on the item?
No.
Okay, yeah, second.
All right, I have a second by Board Member Joyce. And at this time, we'll take a vote on this. No, that's not what we're, we're not voting. Hold on just a second. I'm going to have Mr. Poole, because I've got clarity, but I want Mr. Poole to make sure we're clear with everyone. At this time, I have a motion to call the question, and a second has occurred, so that it comes forward for a vote, two-thirds, which would close this discussion and allow us to go back to the original item that's on the agenda.
Yes.
To vote.
So if you want to keep talking, then vote no.
Okay. Well, do you have a question for the Office of General Counsel as it relates procedurally?
No.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to close, to call the question.
No debate.
That motion passes 5-2, which is a two-thirds majority.
Correct. I'm still doing my equation on that.
I'm having someone check me mathematically just-
And you're having an English major check you on that? So if there is a math major who would like to do that more quickly than I would, feel free.
If 4.67 of you voted yes, then it passed.
Okay, we're good. I will say mathematically in my head it worked, but I, we have a very good vice chair who always helps me. So at this time, we go back to the original item that was on the discussion agenda, and we go to that vote, which is that the board vote to approve the recommendation by the Office of General Counsel as it relates to the superintendent's employment. So we're now voting on that item.
Chairwoman, I want to confirm that the initial vote was from Lori Hershey. The second was from April Carney.
That is correct.
Thank you.
That item passes 4-3. We'll now move on to item number two, which would become necessary because that item passed, which is that the board nominate and approve a new superintendent for a term of up to six months with contractual specifics to be negotiated by the Office of General Counsel. I'll ask for a motion.
Just a moment, please.
Nope.
Motion?
The, again, we're moving on to, I'm going to reread it one more time. That we're moving on to agenda item number two, new superintendent, which again was contingent on the passing of item number one, that the board nominate and approve a new superintendent for a term of up to six months with contractual specifics to be negotiated by the Office of Counsel, Office of General Counsel. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Vice Chair Pearson.
Second.
A second by Board Member Hershey. At this time, we'll open up for any discussion on this item. And I'll start with, given the notion that we have a term, a date effectiveness of retirement at this point, it has been this board's, this board's obligation, because the state requires us to have a superintendent, that someone is identified to lead for a period of time, usually the contract is up to six months, to provide transition while the board determines what to do in a long-term search. This is, again, for somebody for a shorter period of time to keep stability in the district. And so I'll open the discussion up with that. Those are my comments.
Through the chair, based upon the agreement that we just voted on, the superintendent is in place through the end of the current school year, which is June 4th. So this is not necessarily an action that the board has to take immediately, because Dr. Green is in place until June 4th, from my understanding of this red document. And then taking some time that she has accrued and going through the end of July. So do we, I know we're having this discussion, but do we have to, I guess through the chair to Mr. Poole, do we have to today identify what our next steps are? Or is that something that could be discussed at a workshop, since Dr. Green is in place for about the next five to six weeks?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey. The answer is, it does not have to be done today. If the board wishes to address that issue or consider it at a later time, we have, you know, a month in which to do so, if that's a pleasure of the board.
Are there comments on that item?
I'm curious what the will of the board is. Is that we want to identify someone who will step in in June, that date identified in the contract, in June now? Or is that a conversation for another time?
I have a question.
Board Member, I'm Vice Chair Pearson.
From what I recall, in the times that Dr. Green has taken very little vacation, not enough vacation, but very little vacation, and has had a knee surgery and a hip surgery, I believe that the deputy superintendent has been the acting superintendent. Why would that not happen, at least for the period of time that Dr. Green is on leave until she retires? Why wouldn't that just automatically happen?
I would like to add a question on that. She's being placed in surplus after, after the June 2nd date. So does that designation, I'm in concurment. Our deputy super does step in routinely, and so, but if the superintendent's, that's for when she's on medical leave or annual leave, if she's being placed in surplus, which is what this contract stipulates. So what, does that change that in any way or not?
I will confess that I heard that term today for the first time, and so I'm not familiar with that process. So candidly, I don't know. I don't know if Mr. Phillips knows the answer to that. I've heard that in the context of, say, teachers, where you have multiple teachers and one, you know, you may have an excess teacher, so you may move a teacher to another area. I don't know in the context of an administrator who's one of a kind, you know, how that works. So I honestly don't know the answer to that. And I hate to put Mr. Phillips on the spot, I just don't know.
Through the chair, it's my understanding that once the position goes into surplus, that an interim can be selected. But I don't know of any legal impediment to simply having an acting superintendent for that period of time either. So it's kind of up to the board, I think.
I'm going to clarify, may I clarify the question?
If you want us to research that to be absolutely 100% sure that on what date you must have a superintendent in place, we'd be happy to do that, and we'll get back to you within, you know, a day or so.
Board, Board Member Willie.
Yeah, through the chair, I think, based on where we are, I don't think there's any way we can select someone right now. I mean, we just found out this information. So I think that we should sort of, number one, figure out our short list. Maybe the chair does that. And then also figure out willingness, because this is going to be a shakeup. So if folks are even willing to sort of tackle and take on that opportunity.
I would entertain a motion to table this until a date certain, if someone would like to do that.
I move that we table this until our board workshop in May, have a board workshop in May at the Agenda-
Agenda Review.
At the Agenda Review. We had a workshop specifically for superintendent to have a conversation around the lapse in, with surplus, and identifying, then to be able to identify the board's will moving forward beyond that.
So right now, what I have is a motion on the floor to table this until the Agenda Review workshop, which is traditionally the second Tuesday that we meet each month. And then we can bring the question back at that time.
Third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday. It's the sec, third Tuesday. I'm thinking day meetings, I apologize. Thank you for the clarification. And so I have a motion, do I have a second on that?
Second.
I have a second by Board Member Joyce. At this time, any other discussion on that item? No discussion. Wait, we, got it.
Chairman Dr. Coker, I have a motion to table to May 16th, 2023.
Yes, that is correct.
Initiated by Lori Hershey, seconded by Board Member Joyce.
That is correct.
Call for a vote.
Call for your vote at this time. That item passes 7-0. And again, that will be tabled until May 16th, 2023, at which time we'll take it up, which will give people time to determine who might be available and would consider that item. Emergency Board Rules is item number three, that the board, and this is an item that this board has traditionally done if we are in a situation with a short-term superintendent. And so I included it as a part of today, should you want to deal with it at this time. Emergency Board Rules, that the board, through emergency action, reduce the contractual threshold of $75,000 to $50,000 per board policy, 7.14, for a time period of six months, starting June 1st. That would coincide with the retirement date. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Joyce and a second by Board Member Hershey. Is there any discussion on this?
I'll just say that Board Member Jones may remember when Dr. Vidi had stepped away, we took similar action. And it's my understanding that it had been done previously, previously with when other superintendents had indicated separation as well. So I just wanted to, this is not a new, but I do remember doing this under Dr. Vidi.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for your vote. I don't have another amendment, so I'll call for your vote at this time. That item passes 7-0. We'll move on to the last item, which is a non-voting item. Several board members had asked that, we spent a good bit of time on the third-party investigation, the hiring of that, in our prior meeting. But there were some other items that people wanted to potentially bring to the table. I know that I have two items, and I can start with those, and then we can move from that. A question, whether the board has any appetite for us sending a letter to the Douglas Anderson Foundation Board, just letting them know that we have hired third-party investigators, making them aware of that, recognizing we have no authority over them at all, but just making them aware of that action so that they are following it as well. Is that something that we have appetite for? Or can we have a little discussion on whether you would want that to occur?
Could that letter include the request of full cooperation, if that be needed, in the investigation?
Board Member Jones, did you want to add?
I concur with Board Member Hershey that we need to add the language, that they fully cooperate with the investigation.
All right. Is there any other additional language that anyone would want to add? All right. And then one of the other items that's occurred is honestly something that another board member brought to me, which is an idea of a day of listening. The one thing that has happened so far with Douglas Anderson is we've listened to alumni. We've read a lot of emails from people who had allegations that they presented to us. We have not had an opportunity to listen to the actual students at DA yet, nor have we had an opportunity to listen to the current teachers at Douglas Anderson. And again, we appreciate the alumni, we appreciate those that have come forward, parents that have been with us in the past. But the notion of having what we call the day of listening, potentially to have a one-hour opportunity for any board members who want to come and listen to the students at DA that are actually there right now, as to what they are seeing, and then also to listen to the teachers as well, as to what, I've had several of them reach out and feel like their voices are not heard right now, and having that opportunity as well. Is that something that the board- Is that something that the board has an interest in? Just for discussion.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
As the board member for District 3, in which Douglas Anderson sits, I would be happy to do that.
I, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Is there, and are there any other people that would?
I definitely want to participate and join you in that. Because I think it's most important that we hear from the students who are there now and the teachers who are working in that environment. And also provide some assistance to those students who have, have been harmed. And I think that's something that we, as a board, need to suggest to Dr. Green.
Okay, absolutely. Board Member Willie.
Through the chair, I mean, I think it's a good gesture, but I, I feel like, aren't we in a legal matter? Aren't we under investigation? Like, I feel like we're, it's, it may be the right thing to do if we weren't in that, that state. But I feel like, I don't know if it will compromise the investigation. I don't know if it will, what that does if a student comes forward to the meeting, a teacher comes forward, what repercussions could happen if someone does. So I do worry about that. I understand what we're trying to do. But also, we are under the guise of an investigation. So I do, would love to hear more about how, how we do that in the proper way, to hear everyone. But all, does that get added to testimony? Like, I just, I, I think there's a lot we have to answer.
Well, how about if we do this at our next board workshop as a part of next available governance, if I have Office of General Counsel weigh in about some of the parameters around it? Would that work? You raised valid questions. These are just audiences we have not heard from and we wanted to go and hear from.
I have another point.
Sure. Board Member, Vice Chair Pearson.
We are, this is, this is very real to me because I have a high school senior. And I know that my senior has told me that she has tests every day between now and May 15th. And for her, the tests are determining whether she gets college credit for the courses that she's been working in for the whole year, and in some cases, for two years. So I would say part of that parameter needs to be that it not interfere with any activities, performances, prom, graduation, anything that is gonna take away, especially from these seniors' experience finishing out their year.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, absolutely. This is why we wanted to bring it here, so that people could put the parameters around it. Anything else on that? Okay. All right. At this time, I'll take, entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting for this afternoon that the Duval County School Board moved to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
Send.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Joyce and a second by Board Member Hershey. All those in favor, signal by saying yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.